Welcome to the Planning Commission Canyon City, City of Canyon City Planning Commission Meeting dated May 20th, 2020. Regular meeting. Today is a, we don't have any business, official business. Is that right, Patrick?
That's correct. We have no public hearings today.
Okay. And I didn't receive like normal, we don't have any minutes to approve as well?
That is correct, yes. We will have several meetings worth of minutes at our next one. We will be having a meeting June 24th.
Okay. So, that being said, I now call this meeting to order. Patrick, take it away.
Okay. Let me do a little screen share here. Okay. Can everyone see my screen now?
Yes.
Patrick? Patrick, this is Denise. Did you want me to call roll?
Oh, yes. If you could call roll and just see who's here for the meeting, for the minutes.
Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark? Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Here.
Commissioner Shagley?
Here.
Commissioner Ma? Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
Okay, Patrick.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, everyone, the presentation that we're going to have tonight was one that I put together oh, about 15 or 16 years ago. And it was originally intended as a tutorial for new city employees when I worked for Parker. And it was so well received that it was decided we should probably give this to the planning, new planning commission members as well. But the title of it presented a problem. It had been called Government 101. And my supervisor said, "You can't call it that and give the presentation to the planning commission. You'll insult them." So instead, we changed it to Local Government, Foundation, Structure, and Powers. But in my heart of hearts, it's always going to be Government 101, which your high school civics class should have taught you. So let's go, let's wait a minute. Sure, so we want to go to screen. There we are. That's the one I want to share. Okay, so. Okay, so this presentation is divided into six parts. First part is a bit basic in its, in its information that it's going to contain, but we build upon it as we go along. So I start each new section or each new part with a series of questions that we're going to cover in this particular part. Questions for Part One. American government, are we a democracy? What is federalism? And what are the three branches of government? Again, fairly basic, but let's review. Our system of representation in this country, Republic versus Democracy. Well, we are not in fact a democracy. Democracy is defined as a government by all of the people, all of the time, a form of government in which the supreme power is vested only in the people and exercised by them. In other words, you could think of it as sort of mob rule. One particular philosopher described pure democracy as two wolves and a sheep voting on what to have for dinner. What America is constitutionally organized as is a republic by design and by popular ratification when the Constitution was adopted in 1789. A republic is a state in which the supreme power rests in the body of citizens entitled to vote and is exercised by representatives chosen directly by these citizens to organize a government which makes policy decisions. Layers of government, this is called federalism. Under the federalist system that we employ in this country, government is divided into specific layers or levels. At the top, we have the federal level. This is what the Constitution organizes our national government as. The federal government, as defined in the Constitution, has some of these particular responsibilities. Regulation of commerce between the states, providing a single unit of currency nationally, provides for common national defense, and serves as the arbiter in disputes that occur between states or the state and federal government. The next layer we have is the state. Now, the states are organized by individual state constitutions. Their powers are going to be limited to everything that was not specifically ceded to the federal government in the United States Constitution. This is why they have been termed the laboratories of democracy. Now, states cannot adopt constitutions, constitutional amendments, or statutes which are in conflict with the US Constitution. How then, you may ask, is that the Colorado and several other states have legalized marijuana and cannabis products? Well, marijuana and cannabis products are regulated as a controlled substance under federal statute, not as part of the Constitution of the United States. So we, what we have is a situation that is unresolved and likely not to be resolved until the federal government either decides, okay, we're going to start enforcing this again nationally, or we're going to change the statute so that marijuana and cannabis products are not regulated. We don't know how that's going to end yet. And finally, you have the local level. This is the layer of government which most directly affects the lives of its citizens on a daily basis. It is also the most numerous form of government in America. In Colorado alone, there are 3,141 local governments, and that breaks down to approximately 333 cities and counties and 2,808 special districts. Now, in Colorado, local governments are enabled by statutes and as locally incorporated arms of the state government, as such, local governments are creatures of the state. Now, disputes between these levels of government are typically resolved in the courts. The lone exception to this was the Civil War in the 19th century. Next, we've got checks and balances. This is effectively the separation of powers. Under this, we have the legislative branch. First among equals, as this branch of government is described in the Constitution, it makes the laws we must live under. In the federal and state legislatures, they are made up of two bodies, a House of Representatives and a Senate. The House's composition is determined by popular count. The Senate is generally a set consistent number. Under local governments, which you will have is an elected policy board, city council, or Board of County Commissioners, something like that. Next, you have the executive branch. This is the branch of government charged with administering the laws established by the legislative branch, as such, this is the policy implementation branch of the government. At the federal level, this branch is governed by, this branch of government is composed of the president, his cabinet, and all the various departments which report to the president. At the state level, this branch includes the governor and the various departments that report to the governor. And at the local level, this will generally involve an administrator and a management team, as well as the various departments within the jurisdiction. This will vary depending upon how the local government is organized, and I'll cover more about that in a bit. And then the third branch of government is the judicial branch. This is the branch of government that's charged with determining the guilt or innocence of those accused of a crime in criminal cases, liability in civil cases, revolving, resolving disputes between the various levels of government, and the constitutionality of laws and policies that are enacted by the legislative branches of the other layers of government. Now, Part Two. Some questions to answer from this section. What is the oldest form of local government in Colorado? And to potentially give the answer to that question away, for extra credit, what is the oldest county in Colorado? How many forms of local government are there in total? And what form of local government can function most like a private business sector? Now, we start this section with this individual here. His name is John Forrest Dillon. He was an attorney who was elevated to the Ohio State Supreme Court, and after serving about 10 years there, was appointed in, I believe, 1869 to the US Circuit Court of Appeals for the Eighth District, Eighth Judicial District. So he was very prominent as a jurist. And from his home and offices in Davenport, he had a very healthy mistrust of local government. Why, you might ask? Well, think about what was going on at the time. He was at the height of his judicial powers in the 1870s and 80s. And at that time, what he saw on the other side of the Missouri River were a series of territories, the Nebraska Territory, Colorado Territory, Arizona Territory, Oregon Territory. Territories don't function like states. They don't necessarily have constitutions that organize them. They have, in some cases, loose and rather arbitrary boundaries about them, but they still had local governments that were cropping up within them, cities and towns that were springing into existence because someone had discovered gold or silver, or there were the trading posts for people who caught animal pelts, or it was a stop along the new railroad that was going out to the West Coast. Whatever the reason was, these municipalities very often overreached in their authority on certain things. And as a result of that, a lot of cases went before Judge Dillon when he was on the Circuit Court of Appeals regarding local government overreach in the wild, wild west. He regarded, because of this, local governments out west as effectively roadside entrapment stands, and he treated them as such. As part of this, he began to apply three rules that he said were going to be absolutely essential in establishing competent and coherent local governments in the territories until such time as state constitutions can organize and regulate them better. And these became, they were ultimately tested, went to the Supreme Court, found to be valid, and as a result, they got worked into the organization of state constitutions all over the western half of the United States. So Dillon's Rule. The US Constitution specifically does not mention local governments. Dillon's Rule said that effectively the powers of local government have been held to the courts to be limited to these. First, those granted in express words. In other words, as a local government, you have the right and authority to maintain public order. The second, the second point is only those powers that are necessary or fairly implied in or incident to the powers that were expressly granted in the first place. So if one of your expressly granted powers is the ability to maintain public order, an outcome of that is, okay, you have to be able to maintain some sort of a coherent method for people to move about. That's public rights of way and roads and whatnot. And then the third, those essential to the accomplishment of the declared objects and purposes of the community government, not simply convenient, but indispensable. So if public order involves that you're going to have these public rights of way that people can use for transportation purposes, you're going to have to put some maintenance into this, being able to clear obstacles when they occur, being able to plow the streets when it snows. You're also going to have to put some constraints in order to maintain the public use of it for everyone. That would include things like putting in and enforcing speed limits. That was what he said were the three rules local governments had to function under, and as states organize with constitutions, that got woven into the fabric of the state constitutions, and it defined the relationship that states and their, their local governments maintained. Now, under that, the forms of local government that we have in Colorado begin with counties. This is the oldest form of local government in the United States. Colorado has 63 counties, and in fact, the oldest county, to answer that bonus extra court, extra credit question, is Arapahoe County. The role and powers of counties are set by the state statute. They are statutorily set up to have an elected Board of County Commissioners. It also has an elected sheriff, coroner, assessor, clerk and recorder, treasurer, surveyor, and district attorney. Now, I said that they are the oldest form of government and local government in Colorado. That doesn't necessarily mean it's a good thing, because in a lot of cases, they have some pretty archaic provisions in state statute as to how they function. All of those elected officials, sheriff, coroner, assessor, et cetera, do not have any statutory requirements for professional standards or achievement for anyone running for office. You don't have to be a doctor to run for coroner. You don't have to have a law enforcement background to run for sheriff. It's generally understood to help, but it's not required. Now, counties may have an administrative manager that's appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. The second is a combined city and county. Denver and Broomfield would be two examples of this in Colorado. This is a hybrid form of local government that's organized by charter, but sometimes has an elected department, a series of elected department heads. It usually comes into existence when a municipality is annexed into multiple counties. As I said, Denver and Broomfield are the two examples, because both of them have in fact annexed into multiple different counties. It is rumored that at some point in the near future, Aurora may go the same way, because it has annexed into both Adams County to the north and Douglas County to the south. The third type of local government is a municipality. Organized by charter, this establishes their municipal boundaries, which can be amended from time to time by annexation. Municipal boundaries can change through annexation. County boundaries are fixed. The charter for a municipality will define how the policymaking board is constituted and may designate a separate administrator. Talk a bit more about that in a moment when we get into the various types of municipalities. The charter may also designate certain administrative functions and personnel, among them, the town clerk, the police chief or local equivalent, and the treasurer or finance director. The charter for a municipality is also voted on by the citizenry and can only be amended by vote. The charter functions as sort of the de facto constitution for municipality. And we'll talk about that a bit further when we talk about home rule versus statutory. The next form of local government is a school district. This is organized by charter to have a school district Board of Directors. Its principal mission is in delivering elementary, middle, and high school education, but in the pursuit of this mission, it will involve issues involving transportation, food service, and recreational function. So it is, it's a very wide swath that school districts have to provide for, not just the provision of education. Now, they operate independent of counties and municipalities and must perform to standards that are defined by the state. The fifth and final form of local government is a special district, sometimes referred to as a Title 32 special district, because Title 32, under state statutes, is what enables them. These are limited authority districts that are set up to carry out a municipal function in the absence of a municipality's ability to do it. These are usually organized by an elected charter, and they generally have a Board of Directors which sits as the elected policymaking body. They generally function the most like a private sector enterprise, but derive operating revenues, in some cases, from property tax and bonds that they can issue, in addition to any operational fees that they derive from the delivery of their service. Now, they can be set up for water and sanitary sewer services, fire protection, soil conservation, tourism, libraries, parks and recreation, hospitals, and in some cases, as financing mechanisms to fund public improvements. These are called metropolitan districts, and typically metropolitan districts, although they're quasi-governmental in nature, are set up to assume debt in order to pay for infrastructure in large developments. Now, as I said, Colorado currently has almost 3,000 special districts in total. That is an enormous amount, and their proliferation at the local level can occasionally cause problems when it comes to policy implementation. Now, this brings us to Part Three, a closer look at municipalities and some questions to ponder for this section. What are the two principal kinds of municipalities in Colorado that will be home rule and statutory? We'll discuss that momentarily. Which type of municipality is the city of Canyon City? We are in fact a home rule municipality. And what is the principal difference between the structure of the administration for the city of Denver versus the city of Canyon City? So with that, let me first talk about municipalities coming in a variety of forms. The first of these has to do with home rule versus statutory. Statutory cities and towns are those municipalities which limit themselves, only to those powers the state grants them by statute. Although the state constitution grants local citizens the right to organize by charter as a municipality, only state statute regulates local government authority. This is the difference between constitutional law and statutory law. By statute, for example, a municipality that's organized as a statutory municipality that has fewer than 2,000 residents must be called a town. Any more than 2,000 residents, it must be called a city. Statutory towns will generally have an elected Board of Trustees rather than a city council. Now, some examples of statutory municipalities include Monument, Palmer Lake, and Larkspur. Now, home rule municipalities, on the other hand, have, by charter, organized themselves to supersede state statute on matters of local concern. They will generally have broader authority to determine how the local government can function, the role it can play in the municipality's growth and evolution over time, and the types of taxes its citizens may vote to levy. For example, only home rule municipalities may impose a tax on the purchase of groceries at a supermarket. Statutory municipalities are not enabled by statute to have that possibility. Canyon City, as I mentioned, is a home rule municipality by charter, and we, we are operating under that home rule charter that I believe was enacted at the time we incorporated in Now, the forms of administration in local government. The first you have is a council-manager form of government. The elected council sits as the legislative form of the government and appoints a manager or administrator to oversee the daily operations of the town and implement council-defined policy. This is sometimes known as a weak mayor form of government, since the rule, the role of the mayor in such forms is generally more ceremonial. The mayor will sit as the parliamentary head of the council and usually only votes to break ties. In some cases, if permitted by charter, the mayor also has a veto provision on a council vote that would trigger the need for a vote to go back to council at a later date. Now, manager, the manager under this system appoints department heads and has direct control over municipal operations. Decisions made by council in this tend to be the least factional of all the various types of local municipal forms of local government. The type of local government is most utilized, this is the type of local government is most utilized in municipal government. Generally speaking, municipalities will hang on to this until they reach a particular size and then want a more active role for mayor, which brings us to the strong mayor form of government. Denver and Colorado Springs, in fact, both employ this system of organization for the municipality. This is a form of government in which the elected mayor sits either as a voting member of council or separately from the council with a specific veto power. The mayor also sits as the administrative head of the local government. Mayors under this form of government have a direct role in hiring the heads of departments within the administration, thus the mayor takes the place of an appointed manager. Decisions made by councils in this tend to be a bit more fractial, factional, in terms of, generally speaking, you'll have a mayor with an agenda, you may have elected council members with an agenda, and because the mayor has the ability to put people in place at department heads who favor his agenda, you can have more partisan decisions that occur. Now, as I said, Denver and Colorado Springs are examples of a strong mayor form of government. Finally, you have a commissioner form of government. This is typically employed by counties and will typically have a very limited number of county commissioners. Fremont County has three. El Paso County, for example, has five. Now, it may or may not have an administrative officer, and if it does, that administrative officer will report to the entirety of the board. Board members will also have specific areas of operational authority, and because of that, you can have conflicts that come up if you have an elected board member who say has operational authority over your roads and bridges department, and another one who has operational authority over your planning and zoning department, and they've got differing goals as to things they want to achieve. Those two differing departments can sometimes cancel each other out in terms of the implementation of policy if those goals are in competition with one another. Now, we also have the composition of council. This comes down to a question of at-large versus district. Now, district or ward representation is a defined area within a municipal jurisdiction. Each district will elect one member to council. The district boundaries are generally determined by population, so after census updates, there may be a reapportionment as a particular district grows in population. Now, although districts may be relatively balanced in terms of residential population, some districts may have more non-residential uses, retail, office, industry, that sort of thing, than others. And as a result of non-residential land uses, sometimes you will get districts that are geographically larger than others. Now, this, now because of this, you will have decision-making by, by some policy board members that can lead to factionalism, because they're showing favoritism to a particular district as opposed to others. Now, in some municipalities with districts, there may still be at-large positions. That is in fact the case with Canyon City. We do have district representation, and we do have two positions to council that are at-large positions. Now, at-large representation generally happens in communities with smaller geographic areas. In the absence of districts, where representatives of the policymaking board are elected by majority of the voters across the entire municipal jurisdiction. Now, when there are no districts, there is no need for reapportionment of district boundaries. The boundaries of the jurisdiction only change when there's an annexation to the municipality. Now, the downside to this is that it can lead to multiple elected officials residing in only a few neighborhoods within the area. Voters who live in other neighborhoods or parts of the community can sometimes feel they're not being fairly represented in their interests, and that can sometimes cause calls to begin districting. This is usually, as I said, employed in local, smaller local governments where there is less risk of being spread out in terms of neighborhoods that one end of the community having different visions or different goals or different issues they contend with than neighborhoods at the other end of the community. Finally, in municipalities, you have term limitations. This is obviously the number of terms an office and elected official can hold. These are generally enacted by voters to ensure that there's a regular turnover of elected officials so that new people can be considered for the job. In election years where a majority of council are term-limited from running for office again, this can dramatically change the composition of a council and therefore the directions of policy established by that council. Now, as amended by charter in Canyon City, which you have are members of council who can serve two consecutive four-year terms on council, the mayor is up for election every election, so the mayor serves two-year terms and is term-limited to two consecutive terms. Now, the way that works is if you are serving as mayor for two consecutive terms and you finish your term and leave office, you wait, you can wait for a cycle, an election cycle to run, and then at the next election opportunity, you can run for election again, and that would trigger two new terms that you could be eligible for. Now, let's talk about the powers of local government. Some questions to answer in this section. Which of these is not a method of funding local governments in Colorado? Sales tax, use tax, impact fees, or INLU fees? I will tell you now it's impact fees, and I can tell you a little story about how that came to be. Can Canyon City take private property for a public purpose? Yes, although I would suspect the city would probably be very reticent to do so. What does TABR stand for and why is it important to local governments in Colorado? TABR stands for the Taxpayer's Bill of Rights, enacted as an amendment to the state constitution in 1992, and I will talk about that a bit more in a moment. Now, let's talk a bit about the powers of local government and specifically, how is local government funded? The first of these is ad valorem or property taxes. This is usually expressed as a mill levy or percentage based upon the assessed evaluation of the property. In Colorado, the county assessor for each county establishes the value of real property based on location, access serviced by utilities, and improvements based upon building permits that have been issued. This information gets updated every two years. The second is sales tax. This is the percentage of value of taxable goods paid by the consumer at the point of purchase. For many municipalities, this revenue source represents the majority source of operational revenues. Most municipalities will derive Most municipalities will derive more than seventy percent of their operational revenues from sales tax. Third is called use tax. Now, this is a specialized form of sales tax that's applicable to large consumer goods and materials used in new construction. In Colorado, a tax paid on automobiles is also considered a use tax, which is why this gets paid to the jurisdiction where one lives and registers a new vehicle, not the jurisdiction where the automobile is purchased. If you want to go to Grand Junction or Fort Collins and purchase an automobile, but you live in Canyon City, Canyon City will still be getting the use tax associated with that registration. Third is application fees. These are fees collected on applications for land use actions, special events permits, vendor permits, temporary use permits, business licenses, alcoholic beverage licenses, building permits, right-of-way access permits, and right-to-work and public right-of-way permits. Although not nearly as large as sales tax in the overall composition of revenues, in a healthy economy, these fees can amount to a tidy sum. And then finally, we have fines. Fines are generally collected to the court for infractions. It can also come as a form of penalty for late payments on various forms of services the local government provides. The last method of funding that local governments can employ is fees by negotiation, and this is a little tricky to understand. These are fees that are usually agreed to by a landowner or developer as part of either an annexation or subdivision improvement contract. They can include things like fees in lieu of land dedication for parks, open space, or schools, fees to buy down the fiscal impact of new residential development. In Parker, for example, new residential development was deemed as costing more than it provided in taxable revenues, and therefore, when a new residential development proposed to annex, the number of total units it was developing was evaluated against an economic model of the town, and the people who were proposing this had to agree to pay, at the time of building permit issuance, a fee to buy down the cost of that fiscal impact over a twenty-year timeframe. That usually amounted to several thousand dollars paid at the time of building permit. It can also include things like fees to upgrade infrastructure, roads, traffic signals, drainage facilities, et cetera, to accommodate the impact of new development, and sometimes just gifts or incentives of a landowner to entice the municipality to annex the property. The reason for this is that annexation, unlike, for instance, a subdivision improvement agreement, is, it's got to be on terms that are completely mutually acceptable to both parties. The municipality is under no obligation to annex a piece of ground, even if it's in a priority annexation area. If the council decides, well, you know what, you're not making this reasonable for us to annex the property, the property stays unannexed. And at that point, the developer, if they're trying to develop in the county and the county says, well, you can't, you're in a priority annexation area, has to go back to the negotiating table. Now, fees by negotiation will typically include, they will not include, for example, impact fees. Impact fees are where you are evaluating, for instance, a per-lot cost in a residential project for roads and bridges, or a per-unit cost for contributions to what it's going to cost to operate the police department or expand the police department. Impact fees were ruled unconstitutional by the state in the late eighties, and it came out of a case that occurred in Castle Rock. The city, the town of Castle Rock was, in fact, at the behest of the school district imposing fees for, impact fees for schools, that were collected at the time of the plat recordation. It was a per-lot fee, and you added the number of lots multiplied by whatever it was per-lot. That gave you a number, and to record the plat, you had to write a check to the school district and make that payment and show the city evidence that you'd made that payment before the plat could be recorded. Well, the problem was, in one particular case, the negotiated fee at the annexation agreement, the developer went back and said, wait a minute, now that we've gone through and actually done this, we've prepared the subdivision, we're coming in at two hundred units less than we originally decided under, we were going to under the zoning, therefore, we think we need to have a reapproach, a reapportionment of our impact fee. The school district said, no, the impact fee is the impact fee. And when they couldn't, when they went to court, identified how they derived that number and how that number was justified, whether the development had X number of lots or X minus two hundred number of lots, the Supreme Court for the state said, you can't do that. There is no logical nexus between the fee you're charging and what demand is actually being created by the development. So, impact fees have been ruled unconstitutional in the state. That's why, to the extent you're going to get anything like that, the best time to do that is part of an annexation agreement where you can ask for the sun and the moon and the stars, and if the developer agrees to it, you can get it because they walked into the agreement that way. Now, let's continue with the powers that local government has. The first of these is the enactment of local statutes. Now, at the local level, statutes are called ordinances and are adopted as part of the local legislative process by established policymaking, by an established policymaking board. Ordinances carry the weight of law and are enforced through the administrative branch of the government. The enforcement of local ordinance is obviously the next logical step on that. Although this can be done through many of the municipality's departments, the one the public most frequently associates with enforcement is the police department. Obviously, we have zoning enforcement as well, and those are typically done for civil violations as opposed to criminal violations. The third power that local governments have is budget setting. Municipalities can determine their priorities to the setting of an annual budget. The budget allocates expenditures for maintenance of existing town-owned facilities or roadways, construction of new facilities or new roadways, acquisition of new equipment, and implementations of new programs or services and payroll. The fourth power local governments have is land use regulation. This is obviously something that's of importance to planning commissions as well. Land use regulations involve everything from annexation and zoning to the subdivision of land to site plan approval under the jurisdiction of the local government. This has an enormous impact on how a city or county will develop over time and what areas are to be preserved from development, what areas are permitted to develop or redevelop, and what form and quality this development can take. It's important to note that only municipalities and counties can exercise this type of control. The next power that local governments have is eminent domain or the taking of property. This is the acquisition of private property through a state statute-defined process for public purpose. Although the property owner is compensated for the land that's acquired, the public purpose can be fairly broadly defined as anything from a public road to a park, a trail, or open space, to a new public building, to, in fact, the eradication of blights. And the public purpose trumps the objections of the landowner who might be unwilling to sell the property. This is why this is such an unpopular power that local governments have, because, obviously, you're taking private property, and if you've got a wide discretion as to what you can use that property for after you've acquired it, you can, generally speaking, make some enemies in the public. The next one is judicial authority. This is the power to respond to criminal or civil complaints through a court process, the power to impanel juries, the power to impose fines, and even the power of imprisonment for criminal violations. The final power that local governments have is taxation and bonding authority. This is the ability to levy taxes to fund municipal operations or to sell bonds, in other words, to incur debt to help fund capital projects. Now, with all of these powers and methods of funding that local governments have, they also have to live with certain constraints that are imposed upon them by, not only the state, but in some cases, federal, the federal government. The first of these is the taxpayer bill of rights, also known as TABR. This was an amendment to the state constitution in nineteen ninety-two and has an impact on the ability of all governments within the state of Colorado, including the state itself, to collect and utilize revenues and secure funding for capital projects. A majority of voters must approve any new tax if the results in a proposed, of a proposed tax will result in projected increase in revenues to the particular government, or if it's going to involve bonded indebtedness to the community. It limits the growth of revenues on an annual budgetary basis and requires governments to give back to voters any revenues that were collected in excess of budgeted expenses unless voters have authorized the local government to be allowed to keep it. This is a provision called debruising, and that's named after the author and primary advocate of TABR back in nineteen ninety-two. It also prevents municipalities from employing what's known as a real estate transfer tax. This is essentially a tax on the sale of real estate, a sales tax on the sale of real estate, unless such a tax had been in place prior to the adoption of TABR. As far as I am aware, the only two municipalities anywhere in the state of Colorado that have a real estate transfer tax are Aspen and Chury Hills Village. And then finally, it limits government to only being able to go to a vote of the people on issues of fiscal concern at a primary election in May or a general election in November. You cannot schedule special elections to handle items that are regulated under TABR as requiring an approval of the people. The second constraint on local government are called mandates, sometimes unfunded mandates. These are programs or services or regulatory requirements that are imposed on local governments by either the state or federal government, very often with no funds to assist in implementing them. Compliance with mandates is not voluntary. Now, although this is not a complete list, some of the mandates local governments must comply with include the Government Accounting and Audit Standards Act, the Clean Air and Clean Water Acts, the Patriot Act, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the Colorado Supreme Court decision finding impact fees is unconstitutional, Endangered Species Act, and various state and federal acts regarding ethics in government. The third is the organizing of the organizational charter. Not only does it enable you to, in some cases, operate as a statutory municipality, it also prevents a municipality from acting in certain ways. In some cases, the municipality's organizing charter may specifically preclude a city council from acting in a particular way without obtaining voter approval first. For example, a very popular one, given that Colorado was a state very focused on open space resources, if a municipality has acquired land or been dedicated land for open space purposes, and they find that they need to part with it, they don't want it anymore, generally speaking, they will have to go to a vote of the people under a lot of municipal charters in order to be able to authorize to sell it or to use it for something other than an open space purpose. The next are state statutes. Now, these are most keenly felt by statutory municipalities. However, in some cases, homeroom municipalities must also live within limitations imposed on local government by the state legislature. A good example of this is the issue of concealed carry gun permits, where the state opted to act in what they issued as a matter of statewide concern when it occurred that certain municipalities in the Denver area were not recognizing concealed carry permits that were issued by counties outside of the Denver metropolitan area. The state stepped in and said, no, you can't do that. If it's been issued lawfully by a sheriff in another county, you have to respect that. Now, another issue that was determined as a matter of statewide importance was a law that went into effect July first, two thousand and six, trumping local ordinances concerning the statewide ban on smoking. There was a concern that communities that had more restrictive regulations on smoking in public places like bars and restaurants would lose those restaurants and bars to communities that had less restrictive regulations, and so the state legislature said, well, we're going to remove that as an argument to make these regulations valid all over the state. Now, the final constraint on the power of local government is due process. Legislative actions from a local government can only occur in the open, on the record, following a public hearing on the matter. Councils cannot act behind closed doors. This is why all actions have to be on the record. You have to have the members of the board indicate why they are voting a particular way, what issues they have observed with a particular piece of legislation, and it has to be done under the bright lights and public scrutiny of the crucible of a public hearing. You can't simply go into an executive session and emerge and say, ha-ha, we've now enacted a tax on people with two eyes, a double vision tax. Now, you have to do this in the light of day from the deus. Now, that brings us to part five, what I call what do governments do all day? And this brings us to some questions. Number one, and this ought to be an easy one for all of you, name the advisory board all municipalities in Colorado are required by state statute to impanel. That would be the planning commission. Second, what departments in local government have the reputation for costing the most? That would be police, fire, and public works operations for a couple of reasons. Number one, obviously, they've got equipment costs, not just the acquisition, but the maintenance of vehicular equipment, but also because these are operations that tend to be twenty-four hours in nature. So, with that, let's talk a little bit about the functions of local government by department. And the first is town clerk. This is sometimes referred to as the oldest profession in local government. Clerks have record-keeping responsibilities and have obligations in this role as defined by the charter and ordinances, state and federal law. The duties of the clerk will vary between municipalities, but will generally include maintaining official records and documents, responding to inquiries from other government agencies, providing information to internal departments, custody of the municipal seal, documenting official meetings and actions, maintaining ordinance and resolution books, counter-signing official city documents and agreements, administering oaths of office and swearing of police officers, agenda preparation for council meetings, and administering municipal elections. Next on this list is the municipal manager. Municipal managers, the first manager, was actually appointed in nineteen oh eight in the city of Staunton, Virginia. Municipal managers are concerned with the principles of scientific management, the one best way for time and motion and productivity of employees. City manager will appoint and consult with their own management team, and these are generally composed of department heads. They are ultimately responsible for the administrative determinations made by the local government. Under the umbrella of a manager, a public information officer is sometimes created to manage basic information dissemination and to handle media contact. Canyon City, in fact, does have a public information officer. Her name is Kristy Gotham. Now, professional managers are accredited and credentialed to the International City-City Management Association for ICMA. Third of these is emergency services, police and fire. This is one of the principal reasons municipalities in the U.S. began incorporating in the first place, was to be able to provide both law enforcement and methods of firefighting. Police have a number of ethical code requirements and, in some cases, civilian oversight of their operations, particularly when a police force gets to be of a certain size. Fire departments, while still fighting fires, have evolved into not only managing fire prevention, in some cases through the adoption of fire codes and building requirements, but also into paramedic and search and rescue operations. Now, as I said, these two are both among the highest budget-consuming departments in municipal operation, not only because of the regular equipment costs, but because they have to maintain twenty-four-hour operations. Even if at two in the morning, you know, only two percent of your population is awake, you still have to have on-duty firefighters, even if they're in bed sleeping at the time, until they're needed to go and fight a fire somewhere. Now, both functions are officially important in community crisis situations as well, so it includes natural disasters, things like airplane crashes, terrorism incidents, and domestic civil unrest and riots. The next function is the courts. This function is the judicial arm of the local government and, as such, is an extension of the local government's police authority. In criminal case authority, they can impose fines, which can be a revenue source, and depending on the severity of the crime, they can actually remove a person's freedom and subject them to imprisonment. Fine structures are generally set by state statute as opposed to local ordinance, and judges can be either appointed or elected. Here in Canyon City, we do have a municipal judge who is, in fact, appointed by council. Here in Canyon City, we do have a municipal judge who is, in fact, appointed by council. The next function is the treasury, or in our case, our finance department. This is the department that prepares the annual operating budgets and determines and prioritizes needs, cost-benefit analyses, and opportunity assessments. It also handles regular payment of bills and collection of revenues. This particular department will interface with just about every other department in the city on a regular basis and generally plays a key role in the management team. If you don't get authority for something by virtue of a budget allocation to do a new project, you can pretty well be assured that project isn't going to happen. Finally, the finance department is responsible for compliance with provisions of TABR. Now, we have the public works department, and in Canyon City's case, public works is actually spread over a series of interior departments. This is another very high-budget-consuming department in municipal operations. The focus of public works departments is increasing productivity while reducing operating costs. These departments, public works departments, typically fly under the radar and go unnoticed until there's a problem. They have a high level of interface with departments like community development, finance, recreation, as well as the elected officials, and intergovernmentally with other agencies where it turns out our infrastructure and their infrastructure have to mesh. Now, the American Public Works Association has identified 145 functions of public works departments. The traditional roles for public works include municipal engineering, civil engineering and traffic engineering, road construction and maintenance, equipment and facility services, transportation, water resources, stormwater, water quality and mosquito control, solid waste collection and disposal, buildings and grounds, parks maintenance, snow removal, special, and special services such as parades, festivals, and special events. Next is community development. This is planning and building. The concept of zoning was created in 1910 and was found by the Supreme Court to be a valid expression of a community's police powers for public health, safety, and welfare in a famous case that went to the Supreme Court called the Ambler Realty Company versus the town of Euclid, Ohio. Now, zoning and various other facets of planning over the next century were tested in court cases, in some cases going all the way up to the Supreme Court, and each of them was found to be a valid expression of a police, a community's police powers for public health, safety, and welfare. Now, incorporated into municipal functions, planning and zoning intends to rationalize land uses to reduce conflicts in land use, as well as the rehabilitation of slums or blighted areas, and to focus on long-term community vision. The staff of this department will generally prepare recommendations to the planning commission, which is an advisory board to council, and a requirement of state law for municipalities to have as part of a due process review of land actions. The responsibilities for community development include growth management, development, and timing, including building permit allocations and, in some cases, growth limits. These are solutions that are employed in communities like Boulder and Golden. Also includes things like neo-traditional planning, sometimes referred to as the new urbanism, intergovernmental agreements where, for instance, a city and the surrounding county will negotiate about areas of high priority annexation for the municipality, public-private projects, zoning enforcement or violations, community aesthetics, open space acquisition, and general community planning. The next one, we call leisure services, but this is essentially parks and recreation. It's faced with the increase, faced with the increase in demand, not only for larger populations of children, but a growing senior population, parks and recreation departments can be financed, sometimes through a dedication of a portion of sales tax, sometimes through developer actions and user fees, facilities fees, public and private partnerships, or the enactment of bonds to incur debt to build new projects. Obviously, they're also funded, in large case, through the general fund portion of the city's budget as well. The challenge is to make recreational programs pay for themselves with regular general fund subsidy, without regular general fund subsidies. Some communities are more successful with that than others. Now, they're typically concerned with things like playgrounds, day camps, parks, recreation centers, and zoos, arts and cultural centers, performing arts, community festivals and libraries, museums, historic parks and villages, trails and open space, lakes, rivers, and active sports programs for both youth and adult. The next function is human resources and risk management. These are internally-oriented functions focused on employee recruitment, retention, training, and education. In response to the federal occupational, safety, and health administration requirements, it also focuses on a safer workplace, and safer is defined not only as making sure you don't get a shock when you hit the light switch, it's also things like making sure you put policies in place to prevent workplace harassment. It also develops personnel rules and guidelines and makes recommendations on employee compensation ranges and benefit packages. Next is the city attorney. This is the legal counsel for the policymaking board. It's focused on minimizing the risk of litigation to the town, prepares all official legal documents for council, that will include ordinances, contracts, agreements, and resolutions, must keep current with the activities of the state legislature and Supreme Court decisions which could impact the municipality's operations. Now, there is a high degree of interactions with all departments in the municipality in this particular branch. Next is information technology, and this is a relatively recent function in municipal government. It's incorporated to take advantage of technological advances which may facilitate the delivery of municipal services. It's focused on increasing productivity, efficiency, and security. It oversees computer records, computer networks, GIS systems, database management, communications, and office technology. Now, this leads us to one community, multiple local governments. Questions in this part include, does the city of Canyon City have its own in-house fire department? I'm sure you know the answer is no. And prior to 1954, how many cities existed where Canyon City currently exists now? The answer to that is, in fact, there were three. Now, the city government, city government for Canyon City performs all of the typical municipal functions except the following. Sanitary sewer service delivery is performed by the Fremont Sanitation District. Fire protection is, of course, provided by the Canyon City Area Fire Protection District. Maintenance on Royal Gorge Boulevard, U.S. Highway 50, is, of course, provided by CDOT. Dry utilities through franchise agreements include Black Hills Energy, Atmos, Quest Communications, and Spectrum Cable. Education is obviously the Canyon City K-12 education district, school district, and in some cases, transit, although we don't have a transit district here. In the Denver metro area, there is a regional transportation authority. Now, that would conclude, other governments, I'm sorry, that Canyon City works with through intergovernmental agreements, mutual aid compacts or memorandums of understanding include Fremont County government surrounding us, city of Florence, Colorado Department of Corrections, towns of Brookside, Coal Creek, Rockville, and Williamsburg. Now, that, I know, was a relatively fast presentation, and I apologize, I wanted to keep this as close to an hour as possible, but having concluded that, if anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to try and answer them now.
Thanks, Patrick. Does anyone have any questions on the presentation?
It was very good.
Well, thank you. I hope I at least presented something that you didn't know before you came into this.
Oh, 75% of it, yeah.
It was much more than the last one I went through with you, Patrick, so it seemed to have spiced it up a little.
Well, thank you. So... Anyone else, any other questions? Any other comments?
I'll just say, Patrick, that you, you showed me how much I don't know, that I didn't know.
No. Well, if there's an aspect of this you'd like to drill, you'd like me to drill down into at more detail at another point, I'm certainly happy to do that. Like I said, on numerous occasions, I am here as your resource to answer questions, so if there's something you'd like me to expand on, just let me know.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks.
Sure.
I don't hear anyone else with any questions. Patrick, we really appreciate the presentation, and I think you did a fantastic job. As I, a couple of years ago, I went through it, I thought it was great as well.
Well, good, good. I'm glad you enjoyed that. So, wanted to let you know, the, there's an announcement on the agenda. We have selected, I think I mentioned this to you at our last meeting, that we have selected Houssil Levine as the firm that's going to help us with our comprehensive plan update in the drafting of our Title 16 and 17 regulations. Because they are located in Chicago, they have some more severe COVID-19 lockdown restrictions than we do locally. So, the soonest they think they can reasonably get out here will be the first, right after the 4th of July holiday. So, what we are proposing is that we are going to schedule a joint meeting between planning commission and city council for Houssil Levine to make a presentation to all of you about that. That is scheduled for Wednesday, July 8. Please circle your calendars, and I will also send out an email reminder to everyone as we get closer to that date. Building up between now and then, we are working, Kristy Gotham and I are working with the folks from Houssil Levine to build sort of a branding exercise to get the public excited about the outreach that we're going to be engaging in to solicit public input into the comprehensive plan and establishing what the public has in mind as goals for the municipality coming up on the 20-year horizon. So, hopefully, you will all be here. I'm hoping that we aren't catching too many people with 4th of July holiday vacations because I think you'll all be really excited by this group and really excited by the work that we're going to be engaging in.
Sounds good to me. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely. And I had nothing else for you except a reminder that we will have some public hearings going to June 24th. So, if you're not available for that one, please send me a note so that if we have to reschedule because of a lack of quorum, I can do that.
Thanks, Patrick. Please send out a bunch of reminders. I think everyone's getting a little lax in, you know, keeping up on stuff with everything going on, so send us a few reminders.
I know doing these meetings by Zoom is not easy sometimes, so yes, I'm hoping that as we get into June, those, the Zoom meetings may be a thing of the past.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions?
I do not. Always informative.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for, for being here this evening. I hope you got a lot out of the presentation, and I will be more than happy to answer any questions or expand on anything if folks want to send, shoot me an email or give me a phone call.
Thanks, Patrick. Thank you.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.
Everyone have a good night.
You too. All right. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.